Every time I turn around, the flag's in a different spot.
Yeah, I know. So the the flags are supposed to be to the right of the speaker. All three of them.
How are you?
Well, what about the people out front?
Well, see, that was my question. How do you set, how do you look at it? But is it either right from us or right from them? So.
It's gotta be from us.
But they weren't that way until the city hall.
Alright, we're recording, so.
Alright. Tony, would you do the blessing, please?
Father, we thank you for your blessings. We thank you for this city and all the goodness that you have provided. We ask the Lord for provision, for praise, for everything that's needed for the city. We ask you to protect our first responders, our children. And Lord, we just pray your blessings and provision on this city in Jesus' name.
Amen. And Tony, before we start the meeting, did you want to talk about Wednesday night?
Thursday night.
Thursday night, sorry.
Uh, Thursday night at the amphitheater, inviting everyone to a prayer rally. Paul Collins will be there. He is uh, gonna do his George Washington presentation. And he's gonna connect with the founding fathers and the faith of them. That'll be at the amphitheater, seven o'clock this Thursday night. And uh, the inclement weather moves it to Harlem for success.
Thank you very much. Yes. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Mayor Meeks.
Man, all of us are mayor's. That's going back thirty years.
Come on, not that far back, man.
Mayor Judge.
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, Commissioner Meeks.
Yeah, I'm here too.
Commissioner Iguodala.
Here.
Commissioner Dolker.
Here.
Commissioner Zibon.
Here.
Alright, I need approval of minutes of meeting held June first, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Alright, visitors this evening, Dave Dallas on Road Projects.
Mayor Carroll, uh, last July eleventh, the State of Illinois had the bid openings for the, and our project was part of that bid opening, uh, for our Oak and Fifth Street resurfacing. Uh, we had one bidder, that being Howell Paying. Their bid was higher than could be awarded unless we get consent from the city of Mount Carmel. I've gone back and looked at the uh, at the numbers. I guess I don't have anything to say, probably my estimate was probably low. And uh, discussed it with the state. They really feel that if we were to rebid it, which we could, we're still probably only going to get one bidder, and you may or may not get any better bids. The project can be delayed for another year, road continue to deteriorate, and costs is more for repairs a year from now than if we get the work done in this, so. We do have enough funding in our FAU fund and our state bond fund, cover all the increases and still have a reasonable amount left over in those funds afterwards. So I guess my recommendation would, the council would ask the state of Illinois to go ahead and accommodate that project.
Well, that was for me, resign.
What are we talking different?
Yeah, what's the difference?
That's two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. And we have uh, four hundred, well, we'll have four hundred and sixty thousand in that um, state bond money at the end of this year. And it does qualify, there are certain stipulations that we have to use the state bond money for. And by using that versus motor fuel tax, it opens our motor fuel tax to be used on other obligations as far as the roads and sidewalks that are not having the same standards as this project, correct? So.
Your FAU funds that the uh, anticipated unobligated balance at the end of the year is the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in that uh, those funds have to be used only on certain FAU ramps, that being Fifth Street, Oak Street.
Yep.
Mulberry Street, Market Street, College Drive.
And.
And we should have some of the state bond money left over even above and beyond what we anticipate for the sidewalk project.
Right.
I'm sorry, for the Thirteenth Street project. And then we've got like eight hundred thousand dollars in MFT at the end of the year, too.
So what was the total cost?
It was nine hundred and
Sixty-three thousand.
Thousand. So we kind of ballparked in the initial talk around eight to eight fifty. And the reason it probably came in a lot higher is, um, I'm guessing, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but we have to redo a lot of ADA accessibility on Oak. Uh, was it five of them we have to redo?
Um, at least five on, five dollars, about seven on Oak Street.
Okay.
And probably twelve, twelve Fifth Street.
Right, so.
ADA ramps.
And that, that, those stipulations keep changing anyways, uh, makes it more expensive.
Things have gone up, you know, look what, you know, price of fuel.
Yeah.
Three months ago was, gas is two fifty and now it's three twenty and, you know, uh, they're having, they're having trouble getting anywhere like somebody else, just flying in.
Yeah, and then also uh, something the state of Illinois has been telling us for a while is, is that we need to get this FAU money used up. Uh, because if it's not used within a certain time period, the state might grab a hold of it and use it for something else.
And one other, one other little thing, and I don't know whether it's probably worth, Cherry Street Bridge will, I think, relatively soon be, be bid. Uh, when they close off Cherry Street, it's gonna throw all, Route One, it's gonna throw all your traffic down Market, College Drive, and out uh,
Porforn Road.
Porforn, yeah, and for the poor farm out there.
Yep, yeah.
And then if we have this road closed at the same time that project was going on, it's gonna throw some traffic in the same direction that the state of Illinois.
And with talking with the state, uh, Mr. Dallas mentioned the um, the project on the Cherry Street, when it throws traffic down Poor Farm, down to College, to Market, potentially down to Oak, the state of Illinois will reimburse a certain amount uh, per the traffic use on those roads. So um, and that's, I was looking at your sheet, and that's um, gonna be good for us in the future for Park Road or, or not Park Road, but the uh, Market Street, College Drive.
Not, yeah, not Park Road.
Yeah, not Park, yes, Park Road will be uh, restricted to local residents only during that construction time period.
Yeah, it goes to Four Corners, doesn't it?
Yes, it does, yeah.
We, we requested that.
We requested that and.
Four, when was it, four or five years ago when we met with him, I think?
Yeah.
I was street commissioner then, so it's been a while, so.
So, um, what I need is an approval for us to uh, go with what Mr. Dallas has said on the additional funds. So we can, I can sign this letter and get it to the state of Illinois and we can get this project rolling. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Alright, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
David, will we have to make any, any changes in those turns, like at Four Corners? Lots of boys to call.
That's, the county um, has entered into an agreement with the state of Illinois for signage and also redoing that intersection for the county.
That's gonna be a tight turn for semi trucks.
Sure they'll have bigger radiuses and a little bit better signage.
Okay.
They may even put a light out.
Yeah.
They're gonna do flashing stoplights right there, and then also what we requested four or five years ago is an additional flashing light at Park Road. Um, that the state will provide, since, since we already did two of them, they're gonna provide the last to be the third at that intersection, so. And then additional lighting as you come up to that, so anyways, anything else, Mr. Dallas?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Vic Singh.
Yeah?
Welcome, Mr. Singh.
Good evening, everybody. Um, September eleventh, uh, R.D. Chamberlain is organizing uh, an event uh, up at the Merchants Park. And uh, I wanna do the beer garden along with it. Uh, I've submitted a sketch where I suppose you would put the beer garden location.
Who has said sketch?
It went that way.
I had it, I gave it to Mr. Meeks, I don't know where it went.
I handed it back.
I haven't either.
I, I just tell you, uh,
We had it here just two minutes ago.
Yeah, I just had it.
Is um, setting up the beer garden right in front of my shop. Right in front of my shop and uh, it'll set up the center of the road, which is the road that day. Uh, if that's acceptable, that would be proposed for that September eleventh program. Uh, on the backside of it is uh, another setup we propose for September eighteenth. On September eighteenth, we are planning to do a fundraiser for the Children's Hospital, Shiner Children's Hospital, uh, with the Masonic Lodge. So I wanna do a fundraiser with them and set up another beer garden for that. So if one approval is called to them, is it acceptable or any other suggestions?
What's the September eleventh fundraiser, uh, event?
It's an all-American uh, event, there'd be country singers and some car show, car show, trailer show, motorcycle show.
Yeah, he's got four or five um, music groups coming in, uh, already does, so. He had a really good turnout last year for that car show and um, wants to do another one.
So you're wanting to block off the road?
Well, the road will only be blocked for the
Oh, for the, okay.
Here.
It's already blocked.
You were just.
Event, um, I wanna put it inside the Merchants Park, I'm by the hall, so if we're not blocking the road. But uh, we can discuss a little more if we wanna block the road and do it at the same location in front of my shop, that's okay, if not, just.
As far as the beer garden and Merchants Park, we spent a lot of money on sod for Merchants Park and labor and stuff like that. And my fear is, is that if we have a beer garden with a lot of stuff in there, it's gonna kill the grass. And you know, that's up to these guys.
I'm not against the same proposal for, for both.
Yeah.
What would be, what would, what would be the date, the times that you would have it shut down on the eighteenth?
Uh, eighteen, um, we wanna do it in the evening, probably six, six o'clock.
And they have yet to talk to us about their event, but um, Vic's just getting a head start on it, so.
Well, the eighteenth is homecoming weekend.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, so.
So if that date's not acceptable, you can propose us a date. The reason we wanna bring you to town.
I don't have an issue with the date.
I don't know if that matters, but my question, Vic, how will they still get, will they still have access to your store, like into your shop? How will you regulate who gets from the beer garden into?
Well, we have just an opening, uh, so we'll have the opening.
Opening's right there.
So you have to go through the beer garden in order to get in?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, alright.
Store will be accessible, but the beer garden will be fenced in.
Okay.
Okay.
Right now, me, me concerned is getting the dates okayed and, and let it work out the kinks, so we can have these advertised and keep you all.
I'm good.
Chief McWilliams, you got any questions?
Of course, my only real concern would be the, the beer garden, um, and the views of that beer garden, so you may wanna consider having an off-duty officer present to, to do that, to reduce supplyability on everyone's part, would be my honest suggestion.
And please go through Mount Carmel Police Department for that off-duty officer, so appreciate that. Correct, Chief McWilliams?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty likely license, so.
Yeah, we need to administrate that, so. Um, anybody else got any questions?
Don't bother me.
I'm good to go.
I'm good.
Okay.
So the first growing is okay for both events?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, Chief, do you have an issue with blocking the street off both ti, both dates?
No, I don't personally.
Okay.
Cause won't it be blocked off already?
The eleventh, it would already be blocked off.
Right.
Didn't they say there's something going on at Merchants Park on the eleventh, that it would be blocked off for car show or something?
We'll have car show, there's two blocks that we've approved.
Eleven.
And the eleventh, and then um, also they're having the bands uptown that night too, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Good job, Vic.
Alright. Mr. Parrot in Skytrain Aviation, you're up.
Alright. There it comes.
There you go. Say that's your first test.
Alright, we gotta set up here that we have to use the, the screen behind this, I apologize for that, the technology wouldn't connect. So, of course, all you guys to turn around.
Sorry.
Um, last time I was here, I had some good questions, uh, we think that more information you guys have, better for the decision. Um, I'll be quick and short and sweet as possible, but there's a lot of information to cover. Mr. Ackerman has some good questions, Mr. Stowe has some good questions, a lot of information to take in, I understand that, some of it get quite complex, so hopefully we come up with something here to help everybody out here. So first, we need to go through the origins, and everybody thinks it's gonna be a history lesson, which it is. Uh, but this is very important, that you understand this. Um, originally, the airport was Presbydrian Field, everybody see, okay? The Mount Carmel Municipal Airport, formerly known as Presbydrian Field, was deeded to the city of Mount Carmel in nineteen forty-eight by the US government. Uh, Presbydrian Field was one of four auxiliary fields that supported the train, training missions of George Field, uh, which is now the Lawrenceville-Vincennes International Airport. Uh, there you see the four fields. Uh, Mount Carmel was number one, Emerson number two, St. Thomas number three, number four Palestine. Um, George Field was authorized by the United States Airport in April forty-two as part of the, uh, the expansion of pilot training bases by the Air Corps Flying Training Command as part of seventy thousand pilot uh, training programs. It was a big operation nationwide during World War Two. Um, and they chose this area, huh? Uh, a lot of it was the thought that centralized the Midwest, isolated uh, area and um, and for some other strategic reasons. Um, all that training occurred until the summer of nineteen forty-four. Uh, the cadets graduated from advanced flying training schools, um, they upgraded to twin-engine aircraft. These pilots were going to fly primarily medium bombers and transport planes after completing the training, so they would go directly into uh, uh, combat operations in World War Two. Uh, by the summer of nineteen forty-four, the need for C forty-seven sky train transportation, uh, transport pilots was critical. You can see where we get our name from, the C forty-seven sky train, so we try to keep that history involved in that. Um, it was transferred to the George Field Troop Carrier Command, uh, the last training class was graduated in Au, Fourth of August. Um, and all training activities were terminated on August fifteenth. So the Mount Carmel Airport and the surrounding airports were a big part of the war effort during World War Two, so it's got some history. And there were certain places across the country that were designated as the recruited airports. They built these out of nothing and, and really fast, so it's really a testament of the time and the people, of what they could do so quickly. Um, a change, a mission was made, and George Field was placed into the eight-hundred-fifth Army Air Force Base Unit. Um, they began training the pilots as paratrooper drops and towing gliders, by fact, there's a C forty-seven and a tow glider, we believe that's coming out of Mount Carmel back in the, in the forties. Um, there's one of the, the uh, twin engines they trained with. Uh, when the war ended, uh, training at George Field, Presbydrian Field ended on September first, nineteen forty-five. The field was placed on standby status, and it was then turned over to the Air Technical Service Command, and then their mission was to uh, remove all useful military equipment from the property. Um, and the field was declared access by the Army in nineteen forty-six. So they had all these fields in different places across the country, um, and it was up to the uh, uh, War, um, Assets Administrator to do something with them. So, part of the thing about the Mount Carmel Airport is special, because it was actually created during wartime. Um, and when they come up with this plan to deed these over to local governments, there was also plans put in place to allow them to operate continuously in the future. So they had a lot of forethought put into how this was done. So, there's the actual copy of uh, the first part of the page of the Mount Carmel deed that was deeded over to the city of Mount Carmel on the thirteenth day of September nineteen forty-eight. Um, there are some provisions that are very unique to this airport. Uh, the government has a right to use the airport in tender emergency, not every airport in the country, um, is, has that designation. Since this was at one time a wartime asset created uh, during World War Two, they reserve the right to come in and use it at any time. Let me go to the next slide here. Okay, city cannot sell the land, and a lot of that's built into this deed and the provision and the uh, agreement with the federal government. And the reason being is that, and we'll get to this a little later, um, and I, we underline that important parts, no property transferred, business must now be used, lease sold, salaries disposed of, without the written consent of the Civil Aeronautics Administrator, that's now the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration. Um, and the reason is, you can't sell the land because the land was created, appropriated to fund the airport. Um, and if you use any part of it, the FAA has to determine, will this affect the airport? So all that has to go back, it's like a, its own continuous cycle, it has to go back into the airport. So that's what that provision is, and the whole idea is that this is a Department of Defense asset still, technically, and it has to be operated and maintained as an airport, and we'll get to that exactly why here in just a second. Uh, this is the latest airport layout, um, this has to be redone in the next couple of years. And I think the cost of that, help me out, Chad, is what, a hundred and some thousand?
More between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, that is something that has to be done in the next few years, has to be for the airport, cause the FAA has to have every GPS coordinate, and they don't have that complete with this airport yet. Uh, these big red lines you'll see here, oh, actually, this line, this, this is the border, if you see the border, my pointer, batteries fail, so I can't point. But these are called building restriction lines, and then these tiny little things here in the middle, those are the runways. Those are about four thousand uh, feet long. Um, you, we cannot build inside of those red lines, so anywhere inside the X, you cannot build anything, that's an FAA safety zone. You just can't build anything there. Uh, outside of it, this is primarily farm ground in different places out here. Um, so if you take that all consideration, uh, there's only so many acres you can develop there anyway. You couldn't build an industrial plant to build cars, you couldn't build, you know, a, a large complex to do tremendous amount of things. And, and the FAA doesn't want you to do that, they want it to keep, to, to be aviation-related or aerospace-related, so that's, would be use of the airport. Um, this is a proposed taxiway existing, um, this is stuff that Chad's been working on for the last few years. This is a proposed area for new hangars, stuff that Chad's been working on the last few years. Um, and this is proposed, what we've talked about is possibly uh, for airtac and aerospace industry through there, it's about a hundred acres. So this would have to be approved by the FAA, because it is still technically a wartime asset, uh, cause it could be used. So they would have to have approval from all Department of Defense, the FAA, and a host of other organizations to do that. Um, so it's not easy to just do things at the airport, it has to be planned, it has to be approved. Um, and these are the areas that all of those agencies have said this would be a good spot. Okay, so, um, limitations on uh, development areas. Okay, now this is, this is very important to understand. Um, this is a unique airport because of the MOA, which, which is a military operations area. Uh, you can see this line, it goes up around here, this is Ollie, this is Lawrenceville, this is Mount Carmel. Now, the unique thing about this, this, uh, is it Pentagon, it's got six eyes, yeah? Um, this is uniquely drawn because of these airports. So we've heard the jets fly over and a little noise and stuff, and the Mount Carmel just, actually just on the outside of it down here, right there. Um, there's training that occurs here, uh, there's research and development that occurs here, and these three airports must be maintained within this MOA. So if you said, I don't want the airport no more, we're done with it, the federal government will come back, okay, we'll take it away from you. That's how that works, uh, because they, they have to be there. So, unique place, unique airport, I like to say, right people, right place, right time, right ideas, and you're gonna hear me say this throughout. Um, this is unique, so this is, this is interesting to a lot of places. So, let me go off to the second part. This is the proposal, let's see if this runs here. Used to use a mouse. Okay, Skytrain Aviation, Mount Carmel Municipal Airport Partnership Proposal. Uh, let's go to the next place here. Okay, um, advantages, use of opportunities on benefits and set up opportunities on, opportunities on investment account. Uh, that's something we've talked about in the past. Um, I think that was Trump, started in the Trump administration, been really popular, it works. Uh, better use of development foundation and educational and economic grants, there's things we can get through, um, that foundation to help educate and uh, get information about general aviation. Um, airport will not have to compete with other city departments for non-aeronomical grants, that's something now you get into the tug of war. Um, so Chad has to give up, um, the possibility of a grant while you guys are pushing for another grant, and then vice versa, when Chad's needing uh, funds to do stuff, so you're kind of battling back and forth, is what we found. This is through the state level, we've helped this out, so it's kind of like, oh, somebody, the state's going, okay, well, they get it this time, well, you guys get it this time, so that's a tug of war you really don't want. Um, opens the doors for larger investments, not government red tape. Uh, city and Walmart kind of will be able to have full economic impact without operating the airport. Opens the opportunity to use resources not afforded to government, which is private, better outreach for a broader range of customers, clients, expand on flight training, which is pretty much what we do, uh, use the success of firetext response, as business practices to grow the airport. And we'll get to that a little more. Who is Skytrain? Well, that's a, a couple of business partners that we've come together, we provide quality rental and training aircraft, um, at the Mount Carmel Airport. Um, and you have to think about training and, and with pilots, it's like a school. You gotta have a influx of education, uh, cause we all have to be replaced eventually. So we have school kids come in, they learn, they work, they die, that's how it goes, school kids come in, they work, they learn, they die. Um, same thing at airport, works the same way, so you gotta have new pilots coming in, you gotta, existing pilots get trained and, and, and upgraded on, on new stuff. Um, it was formed by Jake Bryan and Brent Parrot, that's me, I'm Brent, Jake's out here in the audience. Um, it was for a pathway to, uh, for new pilots and, and, and to train ourselves. Um, and we've helped generate some extra revenue for the airport, we're proud of that. Um, when the airplane was under jurisdiction of firetext response, uh, its operation has been responsible for half the airport's uh, fuel sales. Uh, we brought in a lot of business in there, cause we're pretty active with it, and um, we're proud of that too. Uh, we're wanting to expand on what's called a fixed base operator, FPM, and that's basically, we manage the airport. We deal with FAA, we deal with the government, we deal with the state, we deal with everything, you don't have to manage anything. Um, our intent is to expand on local services, partnerships, showing the airports, uh, with the opportunity to zone incubator hangar, uh, expand flight training aircraft, if like anything, you have to talk with other airports around, uh, it's a, it's a unique group, so you gotta coordinate with uh, other airports around when you do things. Um, we're gonna expand on like success and reputation we've already been uh, uh, been doing at the airport. Um, and I can say, we're not, yes, we're investing money in this, and we're not worried about the money, but we're also rep, uh, investing our reputation, that's a little harder to fix. So, um, this is a big deal, we haven't been excited about this since we come up with our first company. Um, we, we've seen a lot of opportunities here. Uh, currently, you got uh, fuel, oil sales, hangar rent, tie-downs, wifi service, produce cigar, just the FBO part, there's multiple layers to this, just the FBO part, uh, we can add some things to what you can do at an airport. Now, they may not be that, look that significant, but they actually are to air travelers and, and, and other business and, and development. Okay, our proposal section, first one's gonna be airfield. Uh, I think that was taken two years ago, somewhere near, and then actually you can see this line down through here is actually an area of proposed, if we were to develop something there, and that's where that would be. So, it can't only take away so much from the farm ground, and remember, the farm ground money has to go back into the airport. It can't go into the city's pocket, pockets, um, you can't uh, uh, run a lease against it, um, you can't get a loan with it. Um, it has to go back into the airport, it can't go in our pocket, if it's Skytrain, it has to go back into the airport. That's FAA, and the government has really, is strict on that. So, uh, we'll maintain all lighting and ambience, um, which is, there's a lot, have you ever seen the airport light up at night, there's a lot of lights out there. Uh, Skytrain will maintain all tax and railway payment, um, Um, those are in pretty good shape right now. Uh, Skytrain will maintain all safety areas, that's those red lines we talked about. Certain areas you can't build anything or, um, or do things in. Uh, the automated weather system, which is called the ALOS, I don't know if you can see it or not, it's like it's about right there. Um, that's maintained by the National Weather Service. If you pull up your phone and pull up, oh, how hot is it outside? Is it gonna rain? Which way is the wind blowing? That's actually coming from that station. Okay, that, it's like, I think it's thirty miles out, does that sound right? So thirty miles out, if you're looking for the weather where you're at, that's where that's coming from. Um, we'll be responsible for keeping the clear vegetation on that. The National Weather Service maintains the rest of it. Now, that sounds funky, but this is one of the better maintained airports in the Midwest. Because, uh, Chad can tell you stories of, of places where they complain that they don't keep it, you know, the grass goes up around the sensors and it's, and it's goofy. But, uh, that's the only thing we have to do, that's just keep the mode and nice and neat around it, and, and everything's happy. Uh, facilities. Skytrain will maintain monitor all fuels, plus the quality fuel sold. Quality fuel sold is you pump water into an airplane, you're paying for the airplane, and lord knows what else. So that's a, that's a big deal. Skytrain will maintain all hangars. Skytrain will maintain the office terminal and other, all other buildings involved. Skytrain will maintain the stormwater system and pay any Illinois EPA or local fees. Uh, we're in Illinois, so there's a fee if you pump water somewhere. Uh, equipment. Skytrain will maintain all current equipment. Skytrain will be allowed to sell outdated or beyond required equipment as required. Uh, and will notify the city in writing, and that's just use of equipment, stuff wears out, stuff gets to the point where you just can't repair it anymore, and it becomes time to replace it. Um, we'll adhere to all regular, uh, regulations regarding the Government Services Administration. That's where there's, uh, excess in the government, military, where we can get different equipment, I think that came from there, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it came up there.
Right.
That's a good one. Um, the airport manager will still represent the airport on behalf of the FAA and GSA donations, because he's dealt with them for so many years. It's pointless to have someone else do it. So he's familiar with it. Uh, airport manager will be employee of the Skytrain Aviation. Skytrain will offer comparable, uh, benefit package, current employees will be obtained for the IAW, uh, Facility Act. Everyone there is free. Um, uh, there's like three people that basically operate in that entire airport. So, uh, organization chartering of Skytrain. Jake and I are owners, Chad's our main manager, Robert Stewart is our maintenance guy, Olivia becomes our assistant manager. Uh, nothing will really change. Finances. Farm ground lease proceeds will be paid to Skytrain, all of those must go back into the airport operations. So, there's a lot of, all that, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a cycle. So, the, the farm ground is designed to fund the airport, that's what funds the airport. So that goes right back into the airport. Uh, we'll pay in the fifteen thousand per year for AIP. Um, that's the Airport Improvement Program, the federal government does with the state. And, and that's how you extend runways, building hangers, that's a ten percent, uh, feat. All hangar rent will be billed and collected by Skytrain, all fuel sales collected by Skytrain, all the sales collected by Skytrain. Real estate taxes, since it would be privately operated, there are certain real estate taxes that have to be paid. Uh, no way around that. Airport cash in hand, we've transferred Skytrain to have here in operational costs. It has to operate, um, with the money that the airport created. Uh, the oil well proceeds, which I think is, you understand is, it's not very much.
It's less than a thousand a year on, on a good year.
Does he own?
On occasion.
Okay. So, there is a little tiny oil well out there, somewhere. Development, Skytrain will be given full authority for development of airport property for the good of the airport and the city of Mount Carmel. And that's an important line because the companies we deal with, uh, uh, things work fast in business, especially in high tech, in aerospace. Um, you can't wait six months for a decision. Uh, at the rate we're going, we can't wait, we can't wait two weeks for a decision, because things are moving fast. Uh, the city will maintain all rights for the, for the use of the airport's economic planning. It's the city of Mount Carmel's airport. Anything to develop, jobs, it gets pointed towards the city of Mount Carmel. That's the way it should be, it's the city's airport, the city should benefit from it. Skytrain will set up an opportunity zone, uh, we're gonna expand our aircraft rental. Uh, we're pursuing an incubator hangar, this is a special deal with the government where, um, anything aviation related. Uh, new people coming out as AMP, airframe and power plant mechanics, um, can get a good start on a new business, great jobs. Um, I know you guys are not, probably not as familiar with, uh, general aviation, but if you're an AMP mechanic in this area, you could work as long as you want, I mean, you could get as many customers you want. They're that behind. There's a big push for more mechanics for aircraft right now. Um, and we know because we have to wait sometimes a while to get ours, because every year they have to be, they have to be certified, inspected. And any mechanic work, it just takes time, because there's so many backup. Skytrain will observe the historical presence and maintain, uh, while maintaining an updated airport, it's Presbyterian field. Uh, we like to keep that history there and, and to show off the history, because it was a very vital part of World War Two for training, uh, pilots. Uh, we'll pursue fiber communications, which is an issue right now, and we're, and Chad's been working on that. And we just started to help Chad with that, to get some stuff moving for that. Uh, communication's key, you gotta have an infrastructure, data infrastructure coming out of the airport. Uh, technically, by law, we're supposed to have a paved road from the airport to an existing road, to the existing throwaway. Uh, the airport, what year was that? Three years ago?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, got the first section paved, and the rest of it's ship and seal. So we're gonna push hard to get that paved and, and, and proper the way it should be, because you gotta have a good road coming into the airport. The city will remain the sponsor of the Airport Improvement Program. By law, it has to be that way, we would put in the money for it, the fifteen thousand every year. The city would have to maintain that and keep it in their account. And then, um, and then as the federal and state approved improvements to the airport, and then that would maybe have to transfer back into, uh, that program. That's just because you own the airport, it's the city's, and we're for that to legally work, uh, that's the way it has to be done. There may be things in the future, uh, I think, uh, Senator Bailey and others are working on it, may help that. But for that, for now, if we're all up to work to get the benefit, the full benefit of the state and the federal, it has to be done that way. Uh, contracts, farming contracts, Irish farms, we'll transfer to Skytrain. Um, the only difference in that contract will say, okay, this section of acres might be used for something in the future. But for the majority, if the ninety-five percent of the, the ground will still be the same, there won't be any change there. Uh, Skytrain retained Hanson Engineering as the airport's engineering firm. Um, the airport's used it for years, they'll sense change in that, they're familiar with it. And, um, and I believe they've worked for the city of Mount Carmel too before, as Hanson, I'm not sure. Uh, Skytrain retained a lawyer of its own choosing for legal issues, so we'll pay for our lawyer. We'll obtain AV fuels, that's the most popular, uh, fueler across the nation, uh, so no, no, no change there. Uh, oversight, Skytrain Aviation will present a financial statement of airport operations at the city every May per IA double, uh, IAW Local Government Facility Lease Act. That's a normal thing. We're gonna provide one every year, probably if you want it or not. So that way, you know what we're doing, everybody's on the same page. Uh, the city has the right to conduct and audit and finance the airport operational funds when deemed necessary. Or, and plus AIP requires it anyway, so we're required to have an audit of, of, with the federal government regardless. So, everybody gets the finances of what's going off the airport. And that proves that we're putting the money into the airport, and, and that's where it's supposed to go. Uh, and a advisory board will be established with at least one member of the city government appointed to oversee the airport and approve the program. And I think that's important, you should have a say in what's built there, because what's built there, you will own. Next page. Airport Investment Partnership Program, um, let's look at the history on it. In ninety-six, they, uh, they tried this out with five airports. Uh, worked really well. In two thousand twelve, they increased the program from five to ten. That worked, worked really well. There was a study done by Southern Illinois University that went through, uh, what the impact was locally in industrial and development. Uh, and it was overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly positive. Um, in twenty eighteen, they decided to open it up for all the, uh, possible airports that were capable of doing it. So this is relatively new. So, uh, as far as government organization and government programs and, and business and private entities, this is really new. This is just a couple of years old. So, uh, to be progressive in business and, and the government, this is the place that things are moving. Do this initiative in personal service, airports can only be leased to general aviation airports, can be leased or sold. The act considers permit airports to explore privatization, meaning generate access to sources of private capital for airport improvement and development. And that's a key, key line here. Access to sources of private capital for airport improvement and development. Chad can pretty much tell you that all the money that the airport has, and also the next three years, anything extra's already been spent. Because the projects cost so much, and you have to save up for so many years. Uh, have you ever, guys gotten, I've been on boards and, and, and city governments before, you have to save up for so many years to pave a road. Or save up for so many years to do sidewalk or whatever. This is the same thing on a much larger scale. So, so it takes a long time to improve the airport because of limited capital that you can put into it. Uh, when you, when you privatize, that opens up a big door. So things can move faster, things can be built quicker, and, 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 and move the airport forward. Uh, public use, general aviation airports now become a mixture of both publicly and privately owned. And then my problem would be, uh, in the list of the first ten, or whatever I understand. So, Skytrain Aviation Incorporated, uh, that's the proposal, I got one more to show you, quick and painless. And this is the business model. Okay, our business concept is manage operations development for the, uh, Mount Carmel Municipal Airport by providing services such as management, aircraft services, aircraft brokerage, plane rental and flight instruction. So that's the core of what we do, but we're gonna do a lot more. We wanna expand general aviation, um, and we wanna include the, uh, city of Mount Carmel. And we think that's gonna increase economic growth in city and surrounding communities. Our market summary. Skytrain Aviation was originally part of Firetext Response, was a successful emergency response notification company. Uh, when we created that company, uh, twelve years ago, um, we never imagined it would be an international company. So, um, we were generally excited about that, because we said it's right place, right time, right people, right ideas. And we had some massively large companies take interest in this when we did this, because they said, we don't think you can do that. Three months later, we had a working product, and they're like, and they're going, how can we help you make this better? So, the, the thing is, you know, you think of, you know, these two guys from Lawrence County, who are, they're wanting to do what with their airport? You know, uh, and, and they think they can run it better than we can? Well, not only we think we can, we know we can, just because it's nothing inherently, you know, terrible that, that the council's done. Is there's limitations locally, there's limitations state, there's limitations federal, of how much you can actually do with an airport. So, um, let's say you wanted to get a loan with the airport, and you wanna use the ground, you'd have to actually have a bond. And the problem is, it's in Lawrence County. Uh, it has to be voted on, so you think people would vote on a bond, the convention would raise their taxes in Lawrence County for, for Mount Carmel? So that's kind of an issue. Uh, so that's one block, so that's where you couldn't raise capital from. Whereas if it's privatized, we can raise all kinds of capital for it. Uh, Skytrain currently makes up twenty-five percent of the airport's fuel and oil sales. We do a lot of business through there, through the training and our own, uh, business aircraft, uh, taking care of our own company. We provide one of the lowest plane rentals within three hundred miles. Uh, we're popular between Terre Haute and Evansville, because there's just not too many places to rent aircraft like this. Uh, Skytrain is known to fundraise from Mount Carmel's surrounding communities, so we, we think about the communities that we're in. Um, the airport has limited capital, the airport has limited cash on hand for operational improvements. This poses problems, facts, it takes longer to make improvements, we just kind of covered that. Um, they're passed by not having the extra funds for investments. Skytrain has access to investment funding to attract new tenants and loan companies. And that's one of the biggest things we provide here. Um, we have investment contacts, we're cutting edge aerospace tech companies researching for growth opportunities at small airports. Remember that MOA we was talking about? That's important. Competition. Uh, there are local, uh, private airports. We have the village, uh, the advantage of having a relationship with Firetext Response. Uh, we gain vast contact and professional working relationships with several major tech companies. We have insight on what companies want and where to invest. And we have the ability to move the airport in a direction to bring economic growth, uh, not only to the airport, but the city of Mount Carmel and for everything. Your local contractors, your local businesses. Uh, like I say, it's the Mount Carmel Airport. All that should be directed at Mount Carmel, Wabash County. So, that's who will benefit from this. Short-term five-year goals, establish a service center, provide brokerage, uh, for aircraft, that's basically buying and selling aircraft. Expand on flight instruction, uh, acquire additional aircraft for, uh, instruction and rental. Um, as the business grows, you need more airplanes, more users, that's how that works. Having management control of the airport will give Skytrain the ability to speed the process of securing aero tech investments. Uh, the city of Mount Carmel benefits from good paying jobs, uh, for new support business and the revenue for local businesses. Like I say, it's Mount Carmel Airport, it should be directed at the city of Mount Carmel. Uh, operational capital will come from farm ground, hangar rent, fuel sales, and ground lease for new, uh, for the new companies. Increase in flight duration will keep, will increase operational capital. Skytrain will provide investment capital through its own sources or through one of that many opportunities of investment zones. Uh, these funds will be used for implementing, implementing new services and infrastructure improvements to secure further investments. Pretty much the same team, uh, that's what we run the airport. And, um, we wanna expand on, uh, the maintenance and the flight instruction, that's part of the Skytrain deal. Uh, resource requirements. That's what it requires really right now to run. Get a maintenance guy two days a week, get flight instruction as needed, full-time manager, part-time assistant manager, three days a week. Uh, things we're gonna need fiber, we've talked about a little bit, extension of the, of the, of the road. And that stuff will work on to get to make happen. Finances, the operational capital will run the airport, farm ground, hangar rent, ground lease, fuel sales, airfield fields, fees. Those have to go back to the airport. Hangar in your pocket, and they go in your pocket, has to run the airport. Resource, um, we can do stuff through grants, AIP, state and local grants, economic grants. Uh, there's investment capital self-funded, local banks, opportunity zones, us, uh, as Skytrain. Other stuff that we'll be responsible for, obviously, is the service and parts, plane rental, flight instruction. Risk and rewards. We assume all financial obligations, operational expenses, payroll benefits, everything. We do, we deal with everything, we, we run the airport. Uh, investment grants, you got AIP, um, you got any share required for non-airport grant, that's private, uh, funding. Um, bank funding, all the sources, um, service and aircraft rental, service, flight instruction, that's the stuff that we assume the risk for. We assume all liability for it. Uh, we take care of the, the engineering costs. Uh, any non-AIP supported construction, any private hang, hangars, incubator hangars, website, marketing, Facebook, any other cost-related development. We do it all. Key issues, short-term, signed agreement with city of Mount Carmel. That's our only concern through all this. Of all the people we've talked to, all the companies we've talked to, which has been many, there's a lot of interest here. And I know when you say there's two guys from Lawrence County that are wanting to do something with your airport, uh, we're kind of private guys, we don't go around telling all the things we've done in the past in places and the consequences we had. Um, and I understand that, because I'm, I've sat on boards where it helps to know who you're dealing with, you know, what, you know, what entity you're, you're, you're coming into an agreement with. So publicly, I'm gonna tell you a few of the things we've done. We've, uh, we created this company, um, eleven years ago. And we had a great idea, like I said, right place, right time, right people, right idea. Uh, the stars don't line up so many times in a lifetime, and that was one of them, because when we started to develop the project, it was just like perfect. And, um, we worked with companies, and you see us on our website, companies like Microsoft, Dell, Verizon, um, uh, JBC Kenwood, and ICOM, there's some big companies, you know, that we've dealt hand in hand with their engineering to make things work. Because they, they, A, they liked us, and then B, they liked the idea. And also too, it was something that would help a lot of people. And, um, a lot of times those things don't line up just perfect every time. And, and this project here, when we first come up with it, we looked at ways to try to develop things. And, and we almost, two- And, and we almost, two years ago, we almost went to Indiana. Uh, operationally, we could save a third by going to Indiana. So as an entrepreneur and a business person, you can look at that and that grabs your attention. There's a few legislators, um, that, uh, convinced us that Illinois is worth saving. So, and we're Illinoisans, we, we don't want to leave our home, and we're always been based out of Mount Carmel. And, um, we believe that the ship can be turned around, and this is a, a good start. We're not saying it's going to be a cure to all of Southern Illinois's economic woes, but what we're thinking is this is going to be a good first step. And every business and politician and, uh, government entity, we, we've talked about this too, come to the same conclusion, this is a good idea. So I'd like to end in, um, one thing, it's, it's a hypothetical, I hate giving hypotheticals because, you know, it's a hypothetical. But, you know, let's say we're sitting around in a room a couple of years from now. And, you know, and we all heard the news of someplace else where this happened. And they go, wow, that's awesome, what has happened here? And then we all collectively look at each other and go, damn, why didn't we do that? So this is the same feeling that myself and Jake has had from day one when we come up with this. We were trying to figure out ways to develop things to improve the community, and it kept going back to airport privatization. That was always the key, that was always the block of moving forward with business in, in this area. And then we decided that privatization was the key. And the more we dug into it, the more it made sense, and the more people we had look at it, the more it made sense. And I've got, and like I say, I understand, we're two guys from, from Lawrence County. They've worked with a lot of big companies, um, but I've got some letters of approval or support, I should say. But I'm not sure if you got copies ever enough, but I want to make sure you have copies of it. So hopefully that will help, um, this will help kind of prove who we are. And then, and we're not the only ones, you know, counting the, uh, the gains of this.
Do you agree?
Another one from Senator Bailey.
This is a lot of information.
I know, you thought I got overrun the last time, huh?
So what we propose is, if you could send this to the council, I know we're putting you off for two more weeks, but that would give the council an appropriate amount of time to review all this.
Okay, now we sent, we pre-sent all this to you guys. So this has all been emailed to you. And then, the other, the other problem is, is that time. We're running out of time.
I don't know.
I thought this was different than what was.
This is from Mr. Phelps.
I don't remember seeing that email.
Did it go to your city email?
Yeah.
There you go.
I saw something.
That's your copy system.
What's that?
I got, I, I saw the letter from Darren Bailey, but that's all.
Yeah, I saw the letter from Darren, but I didn't see a copy of the presentation.
Oh, I, that was on there.
On the same email?
Yeah.
I'm sure it hell is. Sorry. Here it is.
What is the rush?
I didn't see that. I have not reviewed that.
The, the rush, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The rush is that this is gonna happen someplace else. And there are some large companies we're talking to.
Okay.
And, uh, like I say, we're, we're, we're getting out of time. I don't know if we could actually make another meeting with this, that's the problem. Uh, if we might be able to, this depends on how, how much we can convince the, the whole town with things.
Last time you said that some of these companies want that fifty-year investment, and that's why the, the agreement was for that long? So why is it now that it's such a rush that?
No, 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 the fifty, the fifty year, the timing is, is, is a, is a decision for privatization. We approached the city a month ago. Um, it's the timing to actually get it done before it goes someplace else.
Okay.
The fifty year is, um, if a company invests a lot of money in something and builds things, then they don't want it to come back ten, fifteen years later and renegotiate that, because that's what would happen. They want to be able to say, okay, I'm gonna build this here, it's gonna be here for the long term of the project, and then some, and, and not have to go back and renegotiate. That's why it's so long.
Okay.
So I'll just be real honest.
Sure.
Um, I'm only speaking for myself, um, here, but if we're making a decision today, it's not gonna happen for me.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm just gonna be honest, I've, I've never, in my six years as a commissioner, had more people, you know, we represent the city of Mount Carmel and the citizens of Mount Carmel, and I've never had so many come to me, talk to me about this since our last meeting in a opposition of anything we've done in six years.
Really?
So, and the biggest thing is probably, they, you know, I guess what I'm trying to wrap around my head is, you know, the, the biggest thing for us to do this is for the economic opportunity. And you're, that's the way you're presenting it, it's the way I've gathered it. So I guess my present, perspective is, you know, yes, if you bring someone in, to build that there and do a, an aerotech thing, that, that, you know, that benefits our area. There's no guarantee they come to Mount Carmel to get a contractor or buy materials. You can steer that, but Lawrenceville's closer, Vinson's is about the same distance. I mean, it's not guaranteed.
We could, we could make it a guarantee.
Okay, um, the second thing is, you put anything up there, all the real estate taxes, in my understanding, will go to Lawrence County.
It's in Lawrence County.
Right, so that's a, that's a little bit of an issue.
We, the city can't control that, we can control.
I understand that. So I, you know, this was a lot of information.
Oh, I know.
I can't, and it helps, I guess, but if I gotta make a decision today, I can't make that.
I thought it helped too.
It's either two weeks or nothing for me. And I can't guarantee I'll make that decision in two weeks differently, but I can't sit here personally and represent the citizens of Mount Carmel after taking that in with what I have and make a decision today. And that's my opinion, there's four other people sitting here and they may be different, um, but that's where I'm at, and I'm just being honest with you guys. So if you, you want a decision today, that's where I'm at. If you want to wait two weeks, I may still be in the same spot, but it'll let, let me absorb it, take it in and go from there. So that's just straight up where we're at, or where I'm at.
Have you developed a contract yet?
Yes, you have the contract.
We have it.
Okay, well, has Brady reviewed said contract?
I told Rudy before, um, my law partner right there, Derek McCullough, is representing Skytrain.
Okay.
So I told Rudy it was a conflict.
Okay.
And he was dealing with it from there.
So it might, might have fell through the cracks between Rudy and Ryan.
I don't know if they've talked about it.
Do you know anything about it, Ryan?
No.
Okay. Okay, so that will have to, uh, be reviewed by an attorney. I was unaware of that, I apologize.
Yeah, I thought, but it's not been reviewed.
Right.
Anybody else?
I think we need to have an attorney look over the contract for sure.
Well, yeah, that's minimum.
So I would say let give us two weeks. Like Eric said, this, you know, this presentation was pretty involved and there's a lot to take in, I know we got an email looking for her. Reading an email, seeing all this is pretty much.
That's the only thing.
I would propose that, let, let an attorney look at the contract and they can come back in two weeks after we get a chance to.
It's last night, four days ago.
All right, I mean, that is a lot of information.
Ryan, do you have the contract?
Uh, I don't, we have to check into, I, I received the original, um, proposal, but not, I don't know that I'd rather contract with, seen a contract. Rudy, do you know where Mr. Whitman may have, uh, reached out to, uh, an attorney?
I.
I know we have a special attorney when you're conflicted, but I have yet to hear anything from that attorney or know that he is working on anything.
Yep.
No, he did not update me.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I can't, I can't advise him further than.
Okay.
I know about as much as you guys.
Well, they're looking at that, Chad, I got a question for you. Um, do you know about how many Mount Carmel residents use the airport on maybe a regular basis? Whether they fly in and out, or they have a plane there, or?
I got, sir.
I got three, okay, I, that's what I was guessing.
I, I can break it down, we have, we have, we have three residents from Wauwawash County uses it on a regular basis. We have one residence from, uh, uh, Edwards County. Uh, we've got, uh, probably four or five from Lawrence County. And then rest of them are, are, are spread out, I mean, I've got one coming up from Tennessee.
Sure.
Be using it, and Indiana, we have, we have from Indiana.
I was just curious.
We have two students from Mount Carmel, we got a license, and we got two students right now.
Sure, yeah, and that's a great program you guys are doing, don't get me wrong, I mean, what you're doing with that, that's great. I'm just, there's a lot to take in here with this whole piece, so.
Okay, it seems like we're gonna have to put you off two weeks, okay? I do apologize, but.
We'll do our job to hold off everything else.
Okay, all right, well, we appreciate your time and your effort you guys have put into this and stuff, so, um, I do apologize.
Possible, I want to discuss something with you, so, I mean, if he's representing you.
Okay, we'll move on to reports. All right, so a lot of things have been going on at the city pool. We recently completed our EAP safety training with all the guards last Friday. We're still searching for guards. Um, our hours of operation will, uh, vary with our current lifeguard situation. Uh, currently, uh, we got one new additional lifeguard today to work a few days, and currently with the five guards we have, we will be closed on Mondays until we get more guards. So, uh, have some other people interested in going through the course. Uh, we have, the issue is, is that we've had plenty of people apply, but you have to be a really strong swimmer to pass the course. Uh, I believe we've sent over twenty kids over to Albin for the training, and so far, only five have passed. So, um, if you're a strong swimmer, you want to make some good money this summer, what's left of it, please fill out an application at City Hall. Along with a lot of other things that's going on, um, I'm asking the council's approval tonight to contact Charleston Engineering. Uh, Charleston Engineering is the engineering company that we use for the grant to the state of Illinois for the rebuild Illinois. Um, in the grant that we applied for, there are some updates and a splash park addition, but the grant does not cover, um, or address any of the issues with the base concrete pool, the pool house issues. And the last major update to the city pool was in nineteen ninety-five. And even back then, they still didn't address a lot of the issues from the research that I've done. We're probably looking, if we went forward with, you know, if we don't get that grant, and we still want to do the splash park, and we have to do the filtration. The filtration alone, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, but we're at the point now whether we need to invest in this pool to make it a destination, or what we have is what we have. Um, right now, I cannot compete with the splash parks and everything else, we're losing a lot of business to that. But I'm gonna really go on a limb here and say, with all the electrical work it needs to happen out there, the renovation of the pool house, the splash park, and, um, coming up with a solution for the main pool so kids don't get their feet cut in it, you're probably looking at two million. At a very conservative rate. Um, the good news is, right now USDA will loan money for that. And also hopefully, uh, we'll have some money come through that maybe from the COVID funds that we can use to go towards the pool. But we're going to have to do something within the next year to this pool. Right now, uh, Mr. Gidcombe can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're losing over four thousand gallons of water a day in this pool. And we cannot.
Ooh, I found a new way to pay for my new water plant.
Yes, um, our main is on constantly, seven days a week to keep that, uh, pool filled. And so, along with the other issues that we do have out there, but anyways, if everybody's in agreement on that, um, I'd like to contact Charleston and come up with some solutions to bring back, to present to you guys. Uh, we've already had a couple of contractors go out and look at the pool house. But the main issue that I'm concerned about is the, uh, the bowl issue. Uh, we continue to paint every year, it's ten, thirteen thousand dollars. We looked at epoxy a couple of years back, we kind of ruled it out because of the cost, but for longevity, it might be a money saver. But we've got to, we've got to do something. Um, so if everybody is okay with that, I will start that route to kind of get a, an engineering estimate.
I mean, I think, yeah, I think you have to at least get the estimates, know what you're dealing with, so, yeah.
Yeah, so find out where we're losing our water at. Um, also asking council's approval tonight, uh, this Saturday is the Fourth of July Parade. And Jedediah Worth has asked to move the farmer's market, um, to the, uh, Fourth Street area and Merchants Park. Um, so I've asked, told him I would come to the council, see if the council has any issues with shutting down that part for the parade. Uh, so the farmer's market can continue this weekend.
Isn't that where the fire truck sets up? That's where they planned on?
They can do it on this other side of the road.
Okay.
Since it's just an intersection.
Will they be sitting up in Merchants Park?
Yes, just tables.
I'm good.
Uh, the Fourth of, uh, July fireworks, with all the construction going on up at the school this year, how to see the fireworks is going to be really different. I've been working with Dr. Blyer and Steve Holt up there at the high school. The, um, high, with the construction at the high school, the stadium will only be accessible from the bottom of the stadium only. So you will have to park off, uh, in the parking lots down off of Golden Aces Way, and then walk up the stadium. Um, that is the only solution we have, because right now, there is no road in front of the stadium. And they ask for everybody, if you come up there, keep off of that area, because they will have some aggregate out there, and they're hoping to get the new asphalt and everything within the next couple of weeks here, so we don't want to upset anything that they're trying to do. So also, the senior parking lot will be for chairs only. That'll be another area for seating, if you do not want to walk down to the bottom of the, or drive down to the bottom of the stadium and walk up it. The senior parking lot will be blocked off for no vehicles. You can park along the road and areas in that vicinity and bring your chairs and sit up there. And that's as, as good as we're going to have it this year, so please enter off Golden Aces Way to the lower parking lot to gain access to the stadium. Fireworks will start at nine P M. And that is my report, Commissioner Meeks.
Where is the, uh, senior parking? I guess I'm not.
The back parking lot.
The back parking lot.
By the gym.
Okay.
Yep. Sorry.
It's okay, I just thought we'd clarify that.
Were you having a senior moment?
Not a senior.
Oh, okay.
It's been about sixty-five years.
Yes.
What do you think? Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, street department, continue no city property. Uh, been running the arm mower, uh, a lot of banks and ditch banks we gotta keep cut, so doing that, cutting limbs back along the levee, uh, we helped the water department board and replace a service line. That was leaking in the twelve-hundred block of North Cherry and pour concrete back on the state highway. How long did that go before we got a permit from the state mayor?
Several weeks.
Long time. Uh, formed up and poured concrete pad for the new water fountain on Oak Street, and then we moved, uh, I guess we mounted the, the, uh, fountain to the concrete, uh, continued to clean intakes. They got a ditch on the discharge side of Fifth Street Levy gate closures. Uh, the Corps of Engineers inspected our levee recently. I guess we were pretty good on that, David. We had one spot where we had to fill in the low spot we talked about today. This is it, filled in the lower area by the levee with concrete, rock, and dirt to raising area. By the car bridge at the request of the Corps of Engineers, and we hauled the barricades uptown for the Roots and Barbecue. Roots and Q, in my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeks, Commissioner Eckmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, general fund is set at one million, six seventy-one, five ninety-nine. Receipts this week at twenty-eight thousand, seven sixty-seven, expenditures of one sixty-one, six seventy-seven. A couple of other funds, since we've talked about the airport, the airport fund sets at two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, motor fuel tax also mentioned earlier, uh, in, in Mr. Dallas's report, uh, is at, uh, one million thirty-five, three ninety-three and change. Uh, year-to-date, um, receipts in the general fund are five ninety-eight, three fifty-one, on budget two nine, two million, nine forty-four, seven hundred, which we're at twenty percent of that, and, uh, we're about two months, right, right at two months through our fiscal year, so we're a little ahead of schedule there. Senior citizens, fish fry, July first, uh, for the Fourth of July weekend, that's held, held annually, and, uh, so, uh, come up and get some fish on the first.
And it will be takeout only?
Takeout only that day.
Unfortunate. Thank you, Commissioner Eckmeyer, Commissioner. Commissioner Dogger?
I'll condense down my report to, to, to the main items. Maintenance department has been working on a permit for the, from the EPA for third and walnut water line replacement. And they are also working on the I dot permit. The sewer department grid collector quit working. The track rails are worn, so we are looking at replacement at this time. More, more to come on that. Water department, Keith is on vacation this week. Cecil Bobbitt will be covering his shifts. And then Terry Boyer with Donahue is working on a month and day to open bids for the new water plant. End of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dogger. Commissioner Zimmerman?
Thank you, Mayor. The fire department has made nine runs this last two weeks. There were, four of them were medical, five of them were their first responders. So like liposists and things like that were the medical to help out with that. They did some training Saturday before last, so a couple of weeks ago, there was some training that they had, or testing, I should say, to add auxiliary firemen, firefighters to, to the department. They did have three people go through the testing, which is a series of both written and physical tests, and all three of those passed, so we now have three additional auxiliary firefighters. Just a reminder about fireworks. Fireworks are fun. Fireworks are also what they say is fire and they are very dangerous, so please keep that in mind. Alcohol and fireworks don't mix. So just a reminder, a little public service announcement for that. Garbage, they have been working on their new route, collecting on Mondays. It seems to have gotten better as they go through. There was a truck that was broken down earlier, so if your trash wasn't picked up immediately today. There was a truck broken down on College Drive earlier. And to our knowledge, they are still going to be picking up on July fifth. Most of the, most places are looking at that and observing that as the July fourth holiday in addition, like City Hall, so City Hall will be closed on the fifth, but the garbage will still be collecting. So end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. Mr. Turner?
All right. I have a few bids to have the council vote on. The first one's gonna be from Jeff White, Guy's White, Inc. It's reference demoing a house that we've just purchased at one thirty-one second, West Second Street. It's a home that has been condemned. The bid amount is five thousand, two hundred. Scope of the work is demo the house, haul to an approved landfill, backfill and level up lot to grade. So that's one bid at fifty-two hundred dollars. And the building is in, needs to be taken down as soon as possible, so I'd like to get approval for that.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. All right, next one?
We have another bid from Jeff Guy's White, Inc., reference a little snap-on property. The bid amount was forty-eight thousand. It has to clean up the entire property, remove trees, concrete, steel and piles of, I assume you means the concrete and steel, level out to the existing grade. And that's at forty-eight thousand, and his was the only bid.
That's actually not as bad as I thought it might be.
No, it's actually pretty reasonable.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Thank you.
There's a lot of junk in there.
Mm-hmm.
Have one more, and this is from Hal Paving for shoulder millings. They've, they said they would deliver fourteen semi-loads, which is about three hundred tons at twenty dollars and thirty-five cents a ton for a total of six thousand, one hundred and five dollars. They would sell it to us cheaper if we would purchase it. However, by the time we figure in time and we do not have the semi-loads to, to do it, six thousand, one oh five would be the lowest cost. And that is for access to, put the millings on access road on Deborah Drive that the city uses for the jet truck. And then also, so the well station, where's that at?
Water wells.
Okay, the water wells. So six thousand, one hundred and five, I'm asking that we approve that from Hal Paving.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion on that one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. So move.
And let's see, finally, last week, we had a transformer that was not operational down by one of the water wells or water pumps, sorry. And I just want to say thanks to M C P U, especially Todd Drone and David James. That came out Friday morning. We were gonna have a lot of rain, or we were suspected of getting a lot of rain. Made a phone call, they met us within fifteen minutes and M C P U got us up and going for the weekend, so, you know, that working relationship is, is great to have and they were very helpful, giving us directions for the future too. So that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner.